Candidates in the room tonight in the gallery. Barbara Fox, candidate for mayor. My good neighbor. I'm Brian, candidate for council and town 32, Corwin. So I'll call a meeting to order. And we do have a bit of a deadline tonight. We have some dining candidates about seven o'clock, about a 35 minute drive. So we want to be done by about 6:15, 6:20 so we can round the troops up now. But anyway, councillor Corwin, I give you the order. Thank you.
Our fatherland, we're thankful for many blessings that has provided for us. We're thankful for this great country that we may worship as we mean and that we may govern ourselves according to democratic principles. We ask that blessing to be upon us that decisions that we make tonight will be without our approval. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. There are no additions to the agenda, so I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Edmonds moves adoption of the agenda. Any questions on that motion? I will call that question on favor. That motion carries. We have actually quite a lengthy list of delegations, but they all decided to enjoy the nice weather and didn't show up at the last meeting. So if I could have a motion to adopt the minutes from September 24th on a general meeting, regular meeting of councils. Councillor Cronin moves adoption of the minutes for the September 24th regular council meeting. Any comments or questions on the motion to adopt the minutes? I will call that question on favor. That motion carries minutes are adopted. We have number six, business arising. You're well aware, remember the history involved in when recreation was split away from FCSS. And so we were sort of dangling without the proper legislation. So we had two readings of bylaw 1621 regarding sending use of town recreation facilities. Third reading was denied on motion to adopt third reading. So the chair is seeking a motion for a third reading tonight on bylaw 1621. Councillor Corwin so moves. Any discussion on third reading of the continued prohibition of sending use of town recreation facilities by law 1621? Seeing that, I'll call for a third reading.
Opposed.
Opposed, thank you. It carries. Sorry councillor. So thank you very much. Now, we have a very interesting proposal. Citizens have been requesting that with the implementation of some guidelines and restrictions, the town is not going to pick up yard waste, compostable yard waste. And there's a few things we've put in new waste bylaw, garbage bylaw, a limit of four bags for your pickup, four containers for your pickup. And the proposal has been made to do some sort of a fall cleanup. Now Marion and I were discussing, and she is aware of a very interesting idea that -- Marion, would you just briefly explain what you are aware that maybe Calgary and some others are doing? I like the idea, quite frankly. I think it's a very unique idea.
Yes, Graham was at the recycling conference just this month, and one of the speakers was Mayor Nanshi from Calgary. And they do what they call, I believe, a pumpkin and leaf cleanup. And so basically, the idea is that they would pick up compost materials, so garden waste, yard waste, those types of things, leaves. So it's not necessarily a cleanup like we would do in the spring, but it was strictly for the compostable materials.
So if anyone -- we're going to discuss this one way or the other. If anyone would like to move something similar to that, councillor Cronin?
I would love to move that because I brought that to Marion after walking and discussing with elderly citizens of this town who love the idea of beautifying, but are too elderly to pick everything in their car and don't have pickup trucks, and too much weight. And I thought that was really a fantastic opportunity for us to look at that extra pickup. And I love that idea of pumpkin leaves, a pickup time, where people could put their greens on a side, on a curb, and be brought to the green pile that we have in town.
It's not burnt because it's black, because it's burnt, anyway.
But, yeah, but the bags will have to be open if we want it to be composted and used as a filler at a waste station. That's the only little bit of --
Do you want to -- okay, so let's --
So I would love to put a motion that we, guide administration, to institute a fall cleanup for this town.
Thank you. So we've got that moved by councillor Cronin. So thank you councillor. We'll have some discussion on that as to when and what and how and some costs that will cost. Councillor Corwin?
That was going to be my first question. How to? Would it be regular town workers that would be doing the pickup? Wouldn't it be the garbage person? Regular town workers?
Yeah, the intent would be that we would use our public work staff similar to what we do in the spring. If it's limited to the compost material, it won't be as labor intensive as the spring would be now.
In the related issue, I talked to a former councillor. I was just on the phone with him, actually, out at the compost pile when there's dumps of grass. And he has concerns that you really can't use it because people are also dumping on their weeds and everything else in there. Is there a way of separating that? I know it's a pain in the butt, we try to take weeds one way and grass another. But he suggested the compost pile, which is fairly useless because it's got so many weeds and thistles and things in it. Just, I don't know.
Right now, we're actually hauling that compost material out to the landfill site.
That's right.
And it's being --
Are we using it for anything like that?
No, no, no. No, it's being used in conjunction with the county's animal composting facility.
So filler.
So I don't think it matters that there's weeds in it.
No, so long it breaks down.
Right. Councillor Green?
Yeah, if it was properly composted, the heat of the composting will kill all the weed. Do you know what they're doing with the compost when it's completed out there from the county's facility?
Yeah, I don't know the details, but I know that they are regulated by the province and to what is, how that's finally disposed.
I just was wondering if that compost was available to people in the end.
I'm not positive.
Just on that councillor, it has a number of regulations. That compost can't go back into animal feedstock. It can't fertilize lands to make animal feedstock. It has a number of things. I think they're working with the sod farms and tree farms right now. It's the two places that's going with -- they can only take it to very, very -- it's an experimental new thing, so they --
Yeah. And just for clarification, residents cannot take compost out there as well. The compost needs to go to the transfer station.
Yeah, to the pile.
And the town and the county have a partnership to dispose of that.
Now, the other question was in terms of when this would happen. And so Marion and I talked about, well, Halloween, I guess, is on Thursday. In other words, getting, helping people get rid of their pumpkins. And so the suggestion would be that first week in November, and it's basically, it's your regular pickup day, and you can put combustible --
Compostable.
Compostable. Marion put that word in my mind. Compostable material only, and on your regular pickup day, that day of the week, that week only. Compostable material only.
The only concern with the week of November 1st, as the mayor and I discussed earlier, is it's getting a little late in the year.
Yeah, it is.
You know, it may limit us this year, but I think in order to get proper advertising out that we're going to do it, that's probably the earliest we'll be able to make it happen this year. But if it's going to be an annual event, then I think we need to look at it maybe a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
Just people are cleaning their yards.
Mid-October or November.
And then, of course, the only reason that I brought that date to the table is because of pumpkins. That's the only reason I brought it to the table. I mean, not everybody harvests their pumpkin for pumpkin pie, quite frankly. So any other comments councillor?
Would the leaves have to be in biodegradable bags? Otherwise, you're going to have to take every bag.
They have to be split, yeah.
So I don't know if anybody in town is selling biodegradable garbage.
Yeah, so it's cardboard, cardboardy.
Paper ones.
Yeah, the paper, biodegradable. There are bags also, there are glass bags that are plastics that are biodegradable also.
Okay, so here's a suggestion, and again, got to be careful of intrusion of government into our lives. Could the town somehow make biodegradable bags available or ask local businesses to bring them in and make them available? Maybe that's a direction we need to look at. Preferably that the businesses get the opportunity to do that. Hardware stores, grocery stores, biodegradable bags.
They would be available at the local hardware stores. We would just contact them, we'd have a time to make sure they have them in stock. I guess, you know, if council sees fit, we can purchase some and have them available here, but I prefer that it be done through private businesses.
I would prefer it be done through private as well, private to entrepreneurs.
It would definitely make the job easier if they were biodegradable as well.
For sure. So now councillor Cronin, for us to vote on this, what are your thoughts on adding biodegradable bags to your motion? Does that create any sort of unwieldy burden on the citizens? Does that create any hardship on the citizens?
I'm going to tell you what I think right now. Because of that late move towards a cleanup, most people, a lot of people already have bags and stuff.
You're right.
And it's in their backyard or whatever, waiting to figure out what they're going to do with it. So a lot of people have cleaned up their yard. I would like to say the same of mine.
Just haven't gotten it taken away yet.
Correct.
Okay, so --
This year might be not a good idea to add that to the motion.
I'm good with that councillor.
Just a suggestion, if the motion reads compostable material only, then biodegradable bags would fit within that motion and we wouldn't have to add that particularly.
But I think in all honesty, that begs the question, the material's compostable, the material's biodegradable, I'm guessing you're going to see a lot of bags or other containers that are not biodegradable. That's just my idea.
That would be in advertising, though, you know, not necessarily in the motion, but in the advertising of the pickup, so it has to be biodegradable.
Okay, but now we want to be careful. Does council want to specify biodegradable bags? I'm guessing from councillor Cronin, whose motion it is, that this year, we don't insist on biodegradable bags. So the next question is?
They have to be split.
Could we maybe just state biodegradable bags are preferable? And then that way, if they don't have them, they can use the plastic ones.
Maybe in future years, if we require the biodegradable, but this year Jeff just had a good suggestion, maybe we get some scout groups out at the compost pile and have --
And split them.
Have their men do the bags. Give them a small donation.
What am I right that you are department that we're doing it that day?
You prepared to suture some fingers back together, right? Okay, so the motion will not insist on biodegradable bags. We want to try to encourage that, and maybe in future fall cleanup, the leaf and pumpkin pickup, no, that's not going to be late enough for pumpkin pickup, but we would insist on biodegradable.
Providing pumpkin pickup.
All right, so I will call a question on the motion. Are you good with that for this year, the first week of November? That's about the only -- I mean, we can't do it any sooner than that, I don't think, because of the need for publicity. So all in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The financial report is there for your perusal. John, councillor, motion less?
Can you have that motion?
Oh, I did that last time, I forgot.
I'll make the motion.
Councillor Smith moves acceptance of the August 2013 financial report. Comments, concerns, questions? I will call a question on favor. Thank you, Kerry.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Marion, did we get all the insurance, town insurance money for the hill damage at this point?
No, we have not. We just, I actually just signed off on another interim proof of loss today. So they're giving it to us in installments as we're working through the process. We still have a number of facilities that require some work.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to know.
Yeah.
Okay, looking under nine A through E, they're all there. We will have Marion give us a bit of an update on the AHS, Alberta Health Services Dispatch -- I was going to say dispute update.
Oh, that too.
So this will be the only item under nine that will even, unless there's some questions, but Marion's going to address the AHS dispatch update. I was going to say dispute again, anyway.
Okay, so I was invited to attend a meeting with the AHS that was hosted by the city of Lethbridge on October 1st, and they wanted to give us a bit of an update. And as you as councillor are all aware, the intent of Alberta Health Services is to take the ambulance dispatch into a centralized system, so they would be dispatched through Calgary or Edmonton. Their explanation for that is that they feel that there will be more efficiencies with the use of ambulances and personnel by centralizing them. Having more ability to understand where ambulances are at a certain point in time and maybe being able to redirect those services as required. Because I did ask that question again when we were there about noon. So basically, the update is, right now, they're working with the city of Lethbridge. They've been working with them since April. The city of Lethbridge currently hosts our 911 system and our dispatch for both fire and ambulance. They are trying to work through the process of linking the CAD system of the Calgary and Lethbridge systems. My understanding is that this will possibly be hosted out of the city of Calgary dispatch center and using their system. They have not got a transition date set as of yet. They feel that the CAD will be able to create rules for sending fire-specific calls directly back to Lethbridge, so it will eliminate the human factor in that reverse transfer of the call. They feel that there would only be a delay of seconds rather than maybe we proceed, there could be some missed calls or dropped calls or those kind of things. They feel that they have the ability to put the checks and balances in place to be able to ensure that that will only be a matter of seconds on the delay of that information back to dispatch fire once ambulances has dealt with it. Just so you understand, citizens will speak to two individuals. You know, they'll still call 911, that gets dispatched out of Lethbridge. Lethbridge will transfer them, but it's a live transfer, so they will be on the line until the Calgary dispatch for ambulances is on the line as well. And then that call, if fire needs to be dispatched, then that call would come back through the CAD system and the city of Lethbridge would dispatch our fire. They're using the public safety mapping system that we are members of an organization called Alberta. I'll give you the acronym, it's AMDSP. And I don't know what all that means. It's Alberta Mapping Data Spatial Something. And Old Man River actually populates that data for us with our mapping. And so they are using that information, that data, for their mapping, because that's one of the concerns that was addressed, was how do you know where Joe Blow is? You know, they're concerned about the loss of local information. So, you know, you might be, I'm two doors down from the Shinnuck Foundation. We know that locally. If you're two doors south of the Shinnuck Foundation, you know where you're at. So they're trying to also populate that data with as much local information. So if it's, you know, Cooley Creek or whatever is a commonly known location in the community, they're also trying to get that into the mapping so that they'll be able to pull that up and have better response. Again, their rationale was the efficiency of coordination, the closest ambulance would be able to respond, so there'd be less deadheading of ambulances and those type of things. The interoperability is the biggest challenge for them, and that is communication between departments. So they talked about the radio systems and how currently the radio systems that Alberta Health Services is using does not coordinate or does not communicate with a lot of radio systems that fire currently is using. So I asked the question, so what does that mean? Are you telling us that we're going to have to -- well, right now, it means they're going to have to carry two radios. For instance, Danny Melvin is an ambulance and a fire person in our community, will have to carry two radios. They said that they have the communication equipment within the ambulances and within their center to be able to communicate with fire departments currently under the other radio system. And they've assured us that they will not take that, those systems out of the ambulances until all community fire departments are able to communicate through the new system. So I said, who's going to pay for those new radios?
Exactly right.
I decided I needed to probably be quiet because I was asking one question, but I said, so what you're telling us is that we need to plan in our budgets to purchase new radio systems so that at some point in time, we're able to communicate with Alberta Health Services and that ambulance dispatch center? And the answer was yes, you will have to plan.
Sir Major Down, move.
Marion, talking to Danny Smith, I was asking him, how much would the radio cost to upgrade to their new system? He said anywhere between $25,000 and $3,000 per piece. And I say, how many radio do you need? He said, 40. That's $120,000 between town and county. It's a lot of money.
So I think that from the emergency services department, my recommendation to councillor and to be discussed at that meeting would be, perhaps we need to be lobbying government to find some funding outside of our MSI dollars to be able to pay for these. And, you know, maybe it's something we need to look into, the regional collaboration grant with all of the municipalities that are involved to be able to purchase those radios. So I think there might be some opportunity there, but I think we really need to lobby government to ensure that that doesn't end up on the backs of our taxpayers to fund those purchases.
Because our requisition will go through the roof.
Absolutely.
So the other thing that they talked about, and Danny was at the meeting as well, so I hope he brings this to the next CMS meeting, but they talked about that the fire departments may require, they're called mobile data terminals, that would be in their vehicles as well so that that data would be able to communicate back electronically. Because right now, you don't get on the phone, right? It's all done on the computer. So they may have to purchase those communication tools as well for the fire side of things. So that's in a nutshell what they have to say.
Thanks, Marion. The scary thing that comes out of that is councillor Cronin's cost. It just, I mean, translate that over the province, every ambulance service in the province, and that's a horrendous cost.
My other concern is that if our ambulance, if we only have, say, one ambulance here, and it gets a call and it's sent to anywhere in southern Alberta, and then we get another call, and the closest one is Pincher Creek, by the time they get here, that person could be dead. And if we look at all these other grandiose schemes that the government has had over the last 10 years, none of them have worked. If you look at regionalization that they did with hospitals in Calgary, it was a complete disaster. And they're still suffering from it. The wait time and emergencies is increased, patient care is decreased, you know, so.
Part of our problem is a lot of our analysts are doing transfers off the Lethbridge back, and all of a sudden, we've only got one ambulance, and they can't leave town. So we're playing for something more regardless, shall we?
I really believe that we as administration and council need to be extremely vigilant when we start the transition period and with a hospital to be able to monitor what's happening and is it truly detrimental to our town, are there casualties because of it? I mean, we know it's not the best system, but I would like to see them monitor the effect of those new policies on our town and county.
Same thing, is it might be too late because it's hard to, I mean --
You can't change their mind, they're decided. And all what they're doing, they are only telling us, swallowing it up, and that's the way it is. It's unfortunate, but that's the way it is.
Go ahead.
You don't have to go too far, ask any ER nurse how it's working. They'll tell you how it's not working.
But I would really like them to start to keep, I mean, their administration to maybe keep track of it for us.
I don't think they need to, they already know.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, if you track.
A lot of them are afraid to say anything.
Yeah, well, they have their job on the line, right?
The other thing I think that we need to do is to let the public know exactly what the government is doing. If you talk to the average person on the street and you ask them, how is emergency service? They say, well, we've got a good fire department, we've got good ambulance service. But they don't know that all this is going to collapse and that the ambulance service is going to be really hard to find.
Well, it has a potential to collapse, the proof will be, once we transition, it's maybe become a scary experiment.
Thank you councillor. Thank you, Marion, for that update on the disaster just waiting to happen. Let's move into 11A. Our administration is being very vigilant in endeavoring to find money, grants, sources of grant for money. And we have a document here, correspondence from the Farm Credit Canada, awarding us, announcing of the award of $15,000 for our new pool of water slide. And on the next page is an announcement from Alberta Transportation, Minister Rick MacIver advising us of a grant of $44,331 from the federal gas tax fund. And the final piece of correspondence has to do with recycling cell phones. And, you know, you can recycle your cellphone by taking in silver and wood. So before I call for the next motion, councillor, if I could, administration as well, I want to convey my sincerest respect and appreciation for each of you for your service on council the last three years. In the case of councillor Smith, six years, in the case of councillor Corwin, six years as well. But to each of you, it is my opinion, after extensive research, that we've done a fantastic job. Having said that, I don't, I think we've been very responsible with the public funds that we're charged with. I think we've done what we set up to do, not just three years ago, but six years ago, is to responsibly manage those tax dollars that we're stewards of. I think as council, we have been very open and transparent, we have been very approachable. And so, again, my sincere gratitude I express to each of you. As the timing goes, the second regular council meeting for this month will be scheduled a week later than was normally the case. I will be away, and if you want to join me and have the meeting in Portobello, I'll be proud to host the meeting, just don't send me the bill for your transportation and your meals. But again, license or gratitude I convey to, it's been, it's been an absolute delight to work in this capacity. And those of you that are seeking election to another position, reelection to council, I wish you well, I wish you the best. It has been an honor, it has been truly a marvelous privilege for me to serve the public in this committee that, like you, each of us, love. I feel that we have been extremely well-served by our administration. Marion's door is always open, she's always very forthright, and I hope that as we have completed our CAO -- And I hope that as we have completed our CAO evaluation just last month, that you've had the chance to express to Marion and to Jeff, I just, whenever I travel and I'm in circles, municipal circles, it might be at a mayor's and reeves meeting, it might be at a mayor's caucus, it might be just people that I meet on the street here. I have the utmost respect and praise for our administration. It's just been a great experience. And I'm gonna miss it, quite frankly. I'm really, really seriously gonna miss it. And so with that, I will call for a motion, please.
I'll make that motion, the last one.
We're in there.
That's pushing.
Thank you.
Now, I'm prepared to drive. Let's meet back here in 45 minutes. I'm prepared to drive. And who else can drive? And maybe it's a good idea to bring your heart paths with you as well. Okay?